Full people here today, so I think before we get started, well, I guess I'll call this meeting to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience and viewers may watch live board committee meetings online at tcaps.net/board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Let's just go around the room and just introduce who's here this morning and we'll start with Ginger on the end.
Ginger Smith and I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Marketing.
Stacy O'Donnell, I'm the Director at Traverse City Northwest Michigan Health Services, Traverse City for TCAPS as well.
Heidi Burton, CEO at Northwest Michigan Health Services.
I'm Emily Speaka, I'm the Executive Assistant to our Chief Academic Officer Secondary, Jessie Houghton.
And I'm Kelly Walter, Executive Assistant to Dan Tysworth, Chief Academic Officer Elementary.
And I'm Dan Tysworth.
Philinoi Humphries, Vice President of the TCAPS School Board.
Erica Moonmore, Trustee and Chair of the Curriculum Committee meeting.
Jessie Houghton, PAC, trustee.
John Ben Wagner, just superintendent.
Good match, good match.
Jessie Houghton, Chief Academic Officer for Secondary.
Brittany Kay, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
I'm Ally Sullivan, I'm an instructional coach at East Middle School and the Secondary Social Studies Curriculum Specialist.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Do you, Dan, do you want to go ahead and introduce Brittany and?
Yeah, so just introductions, we do want to introduce Brittany Kacius, introduce yourself, but new TCAPS Director of Curriculum Instruction, been now on the job for probably five or six weeks, came with from North Edward, very closely with TCAPS in ELA as far as providing support for instruction at the elementary level, so right now kind of right off the get-go as far as helping us out with not only ELA but all things curriculum and especially as we start that transition with our CKLA curriculum.
Great.
So, welcome in.
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
So good. Well, excellent, we'll move into public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, we'll move right along. So first procedural item, we are at the draft meeting minutes portion of the agenda, are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes? Hearing no changes, the minutes will remain as posted. Next item is the 2024-2025 TCAPS District Course Catalog and I will defer to Ms. Houghton.
Yeah, you'll see just a few courses here that we added, a few NMC courses that are dual enrollment, students are taking, and you'll see a few online courses that our students are adding to some Michigan virtual courses there. And then maybe the most unique change that I want to point out is we are running a new AP course at both of our high schools, it's an AP Seminar course, it's in our English department. The students in the STEM cohort who are 10th graders, that will be their English component, and so we are tagging that as AP Seminar and then in parentheses, Honors ELA 10. We talked to a few colleges just to make sure on students transcripts that would be read correctly and they recommended for right now to put that Honors English designation on there for our students so that those that are going on to post-secondaryal colleges know how to tag that course. AP Seminar is a newer course that College Board has rolled out and it's a really cool course that has students putting together research and synthesizing ideas and so more to come on that, but that was a new course that's running at both of our high schools in person.
That was a course that was taught last year with, is it Mr. Fortin?
It's in running in that cohort, this is the first year we've taught this course. Yep, last year we just kind of, we had that cohort running, Mr. Fortin was in at Central, and this year we are actually running it as a course. We know that the research the students are learning will align strongly with this course.
Okay, so it really takes it much more into a writing seminar than a science seminar.
They're using some science curriculum for that writing and research component, yep.
Thank you.
It's great, great, great addition. Any other questions? Okay, we will move on to field trip requests.
Yeah, so some field trip requests here are middle schools, they have traditionally taken students to Washington DC, so you see both of those on here, and then we have some international trips that we have scheduled to through West Senior High teachers, so those are on here as well.
Yeah, the Galapagos sounds amazing.
I don't know if they're looking for chaperones, but I can ask.
I know, my kids will be graduated by then, so yeah, I could come back and be a chaperone, it'd be great. Anyway, those look fantastic and yeah, we will read through all those. Do you guys have any questions on those?
Nope.
Okay.
One, it's a dumb question, but why is, isn't it, West is like $20, $200 estimated and the other one's like a little under $1,900 or something?
For the, for the Washington DC?
Yeah.
It's plane tickets. It's the, right now the dates in which the advisors are looking to purchase plane, they're going to try to keep them as close to right around that $2,000 mark, but right now it's just, it's just April versus May in plane ticket prices.
Okay.
I know, I know.
Yeah, that's great. Just as a little side note, yesterday was Traverse Heights had their move-a-thon and so I went and volunteered there and they raised, I want to say, close to $10,000 for their PTO and a lot of that money will be used for field trips and things for those kids or sports or whatever the PTO decides, but I thought that was, it's really cool, really cool to see. I think it was the most, I think it was the most that they raised on a move-a-thon, so they did a great job. So, yeah, there was a mom that has spearheaded that year after year after year, so really, really great work. So, anyway, little side note there. All right, so and we'll move those field trips on to the full committee for, I mean, full board for approval. Okay, moving on to informational items, first item is Board Curriculum Learning Series, so Jessie and Dan.
Sure, we want to take some time to highlight two in days that are in our instructional calendar in which it's primarily led by our Social Studies Committee, which is why we brought Ally here. Two different days, one's already passed in September, Constitution Day, one that's new coming up, our Indigenous Peoples' Day, that's on October 14th, and what are we doing instructionally around those days to educate our kids with that in mind? So we're going to start with Constitution Day and I will tell you, as I talked to some of our secondary social studies teachers, they kind of smiled at me and said, you do know the Constitution is like the backbone for most of our curriculum throughout the whole year, so although we do emphasize it on September 17th, it is something that we use throughout the year to educate kids and draw connections to, but I will kind of pass this to Ally and let her comment on the work they've done with Constitution Day.
Sure, so all teachers JK 12 on this day or as close to this day as possible, do something to highlight the Constitution. And again, because it's so early in the school year, there's a lot of curriculum where it's like, oh, well, the Constitution is something that we talk about in a couple of months. They do all kinds of different things from memorizing different hand signals that represent the Bill of Rights, the First Ten Amendments, to little songs. In elementary, it looks like grade level bands do a variety of different activities all around, just constitutional thinking and awareness. And then at the secondary sites, each teacher submits a description of the activity that they do in the classroom. Some teachers do something different every year, make it new, some teachers have their tried and true go-tos and so in this way, at the end of the day on September 17th, every TCAPS kid has some sort of new or reestablished learning about the Constitution and what it is.
And again, this is not new for us in TCAPS, we've always made sure that we focused on the Constitution on this day in particular. We just thought we would kind of highlight it again for the board and remind the public that this is something that we intentionally engage our kids in every fall.
Also a great opportunity to highlight Social Studies and Social Studies curriculum. I think a lot of the data we go through as a building when we do data reviews involves language arts and math, there's even part of the NWA that's science, and as far as Social Studies go, it kind of seems to fall by the wayside a little bit in elementary, so this is a way that we, this and Indigenous Peoples' Day is a great opportunity for our Social Studies Department to kind of, can I make some other connections to other curriculum and kind of highlight it to start to kick the year off.
That's great.
I think that's good, I really do.
Okay, so then we'll move into, now this is a little, this is newer for us this year, so the Indigenous Peoples' Day, we have a half-day of school running on this day, it's a Monday. The afternoon, our staff will stay all day for some professional learning, but our students will be in session for a half-day. We also have one other guest with us too, Dan, do you want to introduce someone?
Yes, I introduce Summer Baldwin, she's, leads our Indigenous Education Program and helped our Social Studies Department put our lessons together for Indigenous Peoples' Day, so welcome Summer, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
So JK lessons, when we got together as a Social Studies Department, we kind of started to brainstorm, what's the best way to tackle this, made sure that we were accurate in our learning and that everybody kind of got the same message, so we decided to break it up into two chunks, we did a JK 2 lesson and a 3-5 lesson. Just shout out to our elementary Social Studies team, Sam Walter, Liz Berger, Michelle Sharlin, Beth Myers, and then Allison Sullivan obviously was part of it, and Summer. As we got together, we spent a couple of half-days going through options for lessons, vetting through some books and some readings and then trying to build some activities around those, around those readings. Really nice this landed on a half-day, kind of give that half-day some value. I know sometimes it's tough in those three hours for, to kind of have that learning experience with people still moving through all their specials and all their days, so they have a concentration on that half-day, kind of highlights one item and does help us build some learning around it. So Summer, do you, and Ally, maybe just kind of summarize our JK 2 and our 3-5?
Yeah, sure. Good morning, Minnetonka. So for JK through 2, we are doing a book titled Rock Your Moccasins, which will be a read aloud by their teacher. JK through 2 and the activity that will accompany it is the students will design a pair of moccasins, but it'll be based on questions saying, you know, what are you observing your surroundings? Because generally that's what would influence designs and moccasins, but also emphasize walking together in community. For the JK through 5, or excuse me, 2. And then the We Are Water Protectors is for 3 through 5. Both of these books are authored by Indigenous authors and this one is a Caldecut Award recipient, but accompanies with laws and activity as well and an ode to take care of our water and keep our waters clean for this generation and beyond. And the, this one, let's see, what was I going to say? This one, actually all of our lesson plans included do have embedded into the presentations, the Inishnabe Moen, which means Inishnabe language, into some of the presentations, so the teachers have that option to click the audio and to hear how some of the words are said in the presentations. There's teacher notes that accompany our slide shows and the JK did mine.
That's great.
Okay, middle school?
Yeah, I'm going to definitely turn this over to Ally Sullivan, her and Dustin Worm. Dustin Worm is our instructional coach at West Middle School, they're both incredible facilitators and incredible teacher leaders, but they have done just a really great job with our middle school lessons, Ally, if you want to talk a little bit about.
So last spring, middle school principals started to, once the calendar was set, started to think about what this day in the fall was going to look like, so Dustin and I kind of took that on last spring and decided that we wanted all core teachers to dedicate their class period on this half-day towards Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so a lot of our conversations with Summer were about, okay, there's so much information, how do we want to start? And we balance the, you know, it's 28-minute classes, it's only going to be shallow learning, but that's where we need to start. So every student in, at East and West Middle School will go through their normal schedule, but in their math, science, social studies and ELA courses, their teachers are going to present to them a lesson based on kind of Indigenous People 101, what are the basic understandings that we want kids to have from this day, with elective teachers having some options for that day. So today, actually after school, Dustin, Summer and I are going to be doing some PD for teachers, so they have a base understanding, so before they put this information in front of students, they know the history better, they're more comfortable pronouncing words, and the lessons are grab and go, ready to go. We also have embedded in there some did you know facts from local Indigenous community members, including Holly Byrd, did a really nice video for us, and so at the end of the day, on the 14th, all middle school students will have several blocks of knowledge compared to what they knew the day before.
Will it, will it be organized where like the math teachers will be covering the certain?
Yeah, the, the.
The English will be doing, so that they're not?
Absolutely, there's no overlap, but there are complements to the learning. So the math, they're playing this strategy game from the Southwest Indigenous in ELA, they're going to be tasting strawberry preserves, which we got locally from Food for Thought. In Social Studies, we're going to be doing some map analysis and talking about preferred language. And in Science, students are going to be learning about Menomen, which is wild rice. And so I got a grant at the beginning of the school year to buy all of the supplies for all of that, and so now it's just the logistics of, you know, does everybody have the materials that they need? So that's on the way. We're really excited and we wanted it to be straightforward, simple and really successful to then learn and grow for MLK Junior Day, which will do the same sort of format in January.
I have a couple of questions. Michigan, when do we do Michigan history?
Fourth, no, third grade, third grade, it's primarily Michigan history.
Are there special, is it embedded throughout the whole Michigan?
Yes.
I would hope.
Yep, and then also in, you know, in secondary social studies, in every single year, there are standards, state standards that align to the stories of local history, the stories of Indigenous community.
And then this summer I was up at St. Ignis and went to the museum that I think was Odawa, Ojibwa, and it was really good, but it also looked like they had what could be a traveling exhibit from there, that they had all their displays on the wall that were permanently fixed, but then there were also like banners, you know, those roll-up kind of banners, and it looked like it duplicated information. And I was wondering if even in time it would be interesting to contact them and see if that is a traveling exhibit? And it was, it was good, it was through time, it wasn't just old or 1700s, but it just kind of went through the history and talked about how things had changed. And I thought it was really good, I learned a lot actually going through it.
Yeah, I'll look into that, that sounds great.
And I think our elementary, if I remember, our elementary schools took a field trip up to our, up to the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Tipuwa Indians to the museum there and spent the day there.
Where is that one? Is that the same one?
No, 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 in, in between Leland and in Shami Town.
Yeah, Shami Town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think my kids went to that when they were, when they were in elementary school, they had a day field trip up there, so.
That would be kind of cool, yeah.
It's a great museum.
Because they talked about the contribution through the world wars, they talked about the French and Native American relationship, they talked about how a lot of tribes didn't like each other. So, all of that was really interesting.
Yeah, the lessons were developed with that sort of culturally responsible information in mind, that, you know, the story of Indigenous people is not just one of the past, that there's modern contributions, and if we only learn about Indigenous history when colonialism started, then we don't understand, you know, what was lost and what was true and real before that happened.
Well, if both begin to understand, appreciate the other, then I think that is really a benefit.
Absolutely, yeah.
Maybe steps, but it's a good, good first step, so.
Yeah, I think, I'll let Ally talk about high school here in a second. We've done a really nice job as a district, mainly through Summer and Ally, working with our local tribes and really thinking about what is appropriate for our students and what that learning should look like, that really honors that culture and that, and that traditions. We've also done a nice job preparing and supporting our teachers too. Ally brought in some professional learning during that August PD for all of our Social Studies secondary teachers. We had Erin Burden.
Erin Chivvis.
Erin Chivvis, excuse me, in to talk with our teachers for about 90 minutes or so and do some education with all of our secondary Social Studies teachers, and then they're, after they create the lesson, they are carving out, like Ally said, time here at the staff meeting for staff to go through and like process it and have some conversations, which will help them do a nice job delivering that instruction too, because this is new for our Social Studies teachers and for our middle school teachers, so we wanted to make sure we supported them with that too.
Because most of us teachers in our own K-12 education are, we're missing that information ourselves, and unless we go seek that out, we kind of wander through it a little uninformed. So in high school, 9-12, this year we decided that just Social Studies were going to deliver this lesson, so all Social Studies teachers on Monday the 14th will be delivering a Social Studies lesson that was created for them, that was again sort of basic understanding, they're going to get some map analysis, some preferred language learning, a little bit of history, and then dotted through are some informational videos and you can see Holly there for them.
That's great, that's great. Just to clarify too, this, this is, I know this is new, but this will be moving forward standard?
It's our plan, and we have to negotiate calendar always with the TCEA and, you know, but I think that's, you know, my, my belief is the intent and will of the board.
Yeah.
You know, from that aspect, so you know, following our strategic plan, that is what we will plan on bringing forth and working with our calendar on that.
Okay, I've just gotten community members that have asked, like, you know, is this like a one-time thing or is this going to continue, you know, where we will know this on our calendar and to be able to?
That's our plan.
Grow the curriculum, then, okay.
That's our plan.
Okay.
And for, excuse me, and for MLK Day as well.
Correct, and so we'll do the same thing when we get closer from that standpoint, you know, as well, but as you all know, we have to negotiate calendar, what all that looks like and how that goes, so we're going to walk into it, but that's our goal and intent for sure.
So just a side note, talking about things you don't know, as seasoned teachers So just a side note, talking about things you don't know, as, as seasoned teachers, I grew up in the South and the textbooks in the South didn't even have the UP uh, as part of Michigan. So I didn't even know there was a UP until I moved to Michigan.
Wow.
Yeah.
Was that before we traded in?
Was that? Oh, thanks, Dan.
No, that was before the Louisiana Purchase.
Wow.
Remember when that lasted?
Wow, 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 wow.
No, it was definitely an over oversight on the educational process in Arkansas. There you go.
Wow. Well, Dan and Jesse, thanks so much for bringing both of you to our meeting today and just really appreciate the work that you're doing to, uh, incorporate this into our curriculum and and have it be a standard, um, part of our curriculum. And and I love the, the thoughtfulness of all the way from JK all the way, um, through high school and, um, how and where you're gonna incorporate it. I think, I think it's great. So, um, yeah. So thank you. Thank you for being here too. So truly. Uh, any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, where are we? So next item is the Students' Health Center update. So, um.
I won't go ahead and lead that up just, so, so as you all know.
I'm like writing down notes thinking I'm like a foreigner. I feel like I'm a little not supposed to be here.
It's okay.
But, uh, this is an opportunity, as you all know, uh, a year, a little over a year ago, we started on this journey of, um, opening a student health center, uh, at West Middle School. And so really, uh, at, at least two years, just kind of in the beginning, maybe even a little longer when we first met, just, you know, talking about this idea and the grant. And then a construction phase that took us, you know, a while. But, um, you know, taking the old curriculum slash art building, uh, that was behind West Middle School and taking a part of that and making a health clinic. Um, it's been an awesome experience to be able to, you know, see come to fruition and, um, having, again, uh, both, uh, physical health and some mental health supports as well there. Um, it turned out awesome. Uh, been a great partnership. Um, and so one of the things that, when I was met with, uh, Josie Ballinger, one of our board members, she had asked, you know, for an update, kind of of interested of, you know, what's been going on with it and and thoughts. And so that's where I, uh, asked Ginger to, to work with Heidi to, um, have a presentation. And so, um, we were able to, this is, we, we kind of debated between, um, curriculum and, uh, executive and and the date worked really well for them to be able to come here. And so, um, our intent is to give a committee, and then if the committee feels that, um, it might be good for the board to hear, I would like that feedback for the agenda if that's, uh, the thought. Um, but with that, I would go ahead and pass it off to Heidi to talk about our health clinic.
Thanks. Um, yeah, so I was writing notes. I'm like, wow, this is fascinating. I love, as a parent, hearing what is happening, which is, um, really, it's, it's inspiring and lovely. And I was thinking, how does a health center, like, how do we transition it? Um, and I, I think I would take it from curriculum and instruction. It's all about empowering our students and knowing how to advocate for their own healthcare. Because especially our, our middle schoolers have the greatest opportunity to learn how to access a healthcare system that's pretty safe, lots of consents, lot of protections. And yet they can figure out how to get there on their own, make their own appointments, and start using a system that most people don't know how to utilize. Um, and it's empowering, right? So we're empowering even our high school students to be able to get over there on their own, make their own appointments, and, um, just get ready for their next level after leaving TCAP. So that was my bridge. Uh, it might be a stretch, but I do definitely believe in that whole empowerment and advocating for your own healthcare when sometimes you don't have it at home. Or sometimes you just, they gotta grow up, right? I think they grow up, right? I have a couple of boys, senior and sophomore, they grow up, right? Right, guys?
Oh, my gosh.
You have ten more years.
Okay, so, um, I, I just a little bit about Northwest, just to continue to, um, anchor us. We are from nineteen sixty-eight, over fifty years old. We've provided quality healthcare throughout a wide range of health services in our communities. And we really value the dignity and compassion that we serve with. Um, if you're familiar, we, our main Traverse City Clinic is located over on seventy-two, over by, um, Tom's West Bay. It's a, it used to be a different colored building. Now it's blue since, I don't know, twenty sixteen. Um, and in that building, we provide medical, dental, and behavioral health services. Um, in that building, we've expanded to now having almost ten dental operatories. We have three full-time dentists, a couple hygienists, all full-time, all employees of ours. On our medical side, we have anywhere between three and four medical providers, uh, physicians, as well as nurse practitioners. And on the behavioral health side, we have about three therapists, currently federal licensed, um, social workers. Um, so it's a pretty full, comprehensive, um, list of services that we offer. One waiting room, remove all those stigmas, you don't really know why you're there. Um, and people just come out of a door and call your name, right? So it's, it's nice to remove those, um, barriers. So our history together with TCAPs, uh, oh, let me just also say, before I get there, uh, just since I'm going into Northwest. So we have our Traverse City Clinic, but we also have one in Benzie, Manistee, and in Shelby. Additionally, the model that we have at West Middle School, we have located also at Manistee area public schools in their middle high school. Um, and then also Mason Central, we have, um, behavioral health only in their school as well. So this was our third site that we had opened up in a school. Um, about April twenty twenty-two, uh, we came together. We met as a great team of members to discuss this idea of having a child and adolescent, um, health center here, um, at TCAPs through the leadership of both, um, Dr. Van Wagner and Ginger. This really came to fruition with the full board support. Fall of twenty-two, we were then awarded a grant through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for about a hundred and eighty thousand to build and operate, um, the Child and Adolescent Health Center at West Middle School. And then in January of twenty twenty-four, we, we opened it. It took more than a hundred and eighty thousand. If you were following, we received a few other grants to support some ERPA funds as well. Um, so we really want to thank our community for supporting. And then there was definitely some generosity given from TCAPs um, in lots of different levels to start living in a building that's not ours. Um, at any time anyone wants to ask a question, feel free. And I will have us out by noon, Dan.
Yes.
We're continued a commitment to our wellbeing, to your wellbeing, to the child's wellbeing. Um, you can read it, what our goal is up there, um, to, you know, provide primary care and preventative health services, including well care, diagnosing and treatment for both acute and chronic illnesses. So we provide both the physical and the mental health at the TCAPs West Middle School. So we have a, a physician's assistant there as well as a therapist there, which we'll get into in just a moment. I also wanted just to share that what the state of Michigan requires for child, child adolescent health centers, which I tend to call school-based health centers. They're kind of interchangeable. So if you hear me flip-flop it, it's pretty normal. I worked in Illinois forever before I moved to Michigan, and they were always called school-based health centers. And in Michigan, they called them, they call them child adolescent health centers. So sometimes they're, they're interchangeable. It is our requirement to receive the grant from Michigan Department of Health, Health and Human Services that we serve at least two hundred students annually, that we take care of students three to twenty-one, um, that we designate eighteen-only hours. Uh, we operate year-round and at one location. So when everyone is on Christmas break, we're, we tend to be open. A little lonely at times, but we are open. Um, we provide a minimum of twenty-four hours of behavioral health services. Actually, that's, um, we do forty. So we only have to do twenty-four, but we've opened it up in, um, uh, under the forty. And we have twenty-four hours of medical care services. That is very true. Um, and there can, they are three consistent days, consecutive days, and they always overlap with our behavioral health therapist while. So they're always, um, um, not interplaying, but they're, um, integrated with each other. Um, we have youth input through our community and our youth advisory committees. Um, and we've activated a community advisory committee that meets twice a year. Partnership between NMHSI and TCAPs, it's kind of a long list of greatness. I think, um, the school works together with our health centers to identify the needs of our student population. We saw this over and over again since January. Um, we would get phone calls from the school saying, I have a new family, or there's definitely a family in need. Can they be seen? Can they be seen now? We have a sports physical. Can they be seen now? We're always a yes. We try to be more yes than anything else. The school is a partner with us and helps address community healthcare needs and social determinants of health. We, um, we review everyone's social determinants of health when they come through our doors. Cause a lot of times, um, we're meeting needs beyond just their physical or their mental wellbeing. Um, this partnership is built on mutual respect and collaboration between the school and the provider to promote health and educational success. Um, that is true all day long with Kristen and the rest of the team at West Middle School. That's our biggest collaborator, just being in her backyard, um, and that's been, it's just been lovely. Um, understanding, respect, accountability with educational systems, that's on our part. So we do a lot of education just on our end of, of our team to understand, um, a pretty foreign system to us, um, education. Um, so we do some work around that. We try to integrate as much as we can. Um, we have a shared vision. We communicate those through our teacher, support staff, and students. We build some collaboration, mutually respectful relationships. And, uh, this is what our foundation is that puts us together. We do have, uh, flexible scheduling. Uh, they can book an appointment during or after school hours. They can just stop by the health center. They can call, um, and this year-round accountability, which I already, um, kind of shared that. And you might ask, like, how much does it cost to go there? Um, we, um, do bill insurances, so, um, any, whether it's Medicaid or whether it's a private insurance, we bill for that. Um, we also have a sliding fee scale, so for families that don't have Medicaid or private insurance, they can, um, fill out a income, um, income form to find out where they fit into our slides. So two hundred percent or below the federal poverty level is a twenty-dollar medical visit. I always say we never shake down our fifth graders or our second graders, right? If they're coming in, we're seeing them, and I don't know, often I'm not sure a bill ever goes out, quite frankly. It's not the purpose. Um, we figure out how to sustain ourselves in other ways. No matter what, everyone is welcome. Open house, just to celebrate it once again, January twenty twenty-four, it was a really fun day, I thought. And it wasn't too crazy cold, and it was just lovely. Um, it was a great day. We opened it up. Um, again, if you're not familiar, we're in that curriculum, but, ha, that was the connection. We're in the old curriculum building. Sorry. But we're there now. That's a really great space. Um, and, uh, we, I don't know, I think I have some photos of the inside of it too. This is our staff that are there. So Hannah Wilson is our physician's assistant. She's our medical provider. Erica Spalding is our behavioral health therapist, and then Kaylee's our community health worker that works with all of our students. Medical services, um, i- it's a regular medical office, right? Physicals, well, child visits, treatments for chronic illnesses, injuries, um, vision, hearing screenings, immunizations, lab services, asthma, you name it, we can do it. Hannah's pretty fantastic. She really just loves this work. Uh, you could probably attest to that too. Stacy is the clinic director. Um, she just, she used to work in our Benzonia Clinic. And when we knew that we were gonna open up at TCAPs one, we offered it to her. She lives out in Kingsley on a strawberry farm. And she was like, yes, please. She just loves adolescent health and loves that age group. So she's a really great fit for us. We have two medical exam rooms. Um, one has a purple wall, one has a green wall. Um, there's our behavioral health room. Again, assess, diagnose, therapy, crisis intervention, risk assessments. It's mostly mild to moderate. Um, anything beyond that, we have other sort of resources to help that family move forward. But oftentimes, there's nowhere else to move the family to. So, um, we're just navigating that and, um, providing as much care as we can. Um, and then we have patient support services, so really helping our families get, um, access to Medicaid, health insurance enrollment, um, connecting them to community resources, health education, interpretation as needed. Like I said, we had a couple of Spanish-speaking families that came, and, um, we have lots of translators um, and bilingual folks over in the Traverse City Clinic. So bringing them, actually, our receptionist is bilingual as well. Um, but we also, as I'm sure you have noticed, we have a pretty large Ukrainian population. And we take care of a lot of the Ukrainian population also at our clinics. And so that's kind of a nice, um, bridge, so we can take care of their kiddos at the clinic. And then we tend to take care of their parents and families back over at the, uh, at our main site over on seventy-two. So a little bit of data, um, kicking off again in January, um, we've seen, uh, we have a hundred and eighty-five unduplicated users. So a hundred and eighty-five students have utilized our system. Eighty-eight are female, ninety-seven are male. I thought that was pretty fantastic. It usually is like higher female than male, but I think this is great. And then you can see the age breakdown. Uh, what I think is good about this, um, definitely our ten-to-seventeen-year-olds are using it the most, which is what I would expect. We have our high schoolers that can drive. We have our middle schoolers that can walk. Um, I haven't figured out how to get the East Middle School kiddos over or the Central yet, but, um, I, I think some point maybe we'll figure that out. Um, but that's, I, I think it's a good breath. I also think I'd like to see more of the five through nine, but it's hard to get those elementary kiddos there or their families. So we definitely have some challenges and barriers that we need to work through. What we do have, you'll see in the total visits, we've had six hundred and fifty-eight visits. A hundred and thirty-four medical, five hundred and one behavioral health, and twenty-three telehealth. So even if we can have an elementary kid at a school do telemedicine, that's a, that's a win all day long, right? So they can do either behavioral health via telemedicine, or they can do a physical health via telemedicine, especially if it's, um, like an earache or sore throat or whatever, like, yeah, you're out or in or whatever, right? So we're pretty capable of doing that and pretty flexible. Um, that will be interesting to see in the up this year, if that number changes or how our system is utilized. Um, so. Um, I'm gonna let you talk, Stacy, a little bit about this, a couple of slides.
So just.
Quick question.
Yes, yeah.
Couple of questions.
Oh, yeah.
Um, one of them is, are a lot of those, the male visits, are these sports-related? Are you doing sports physicals there?
We do, but I wouldn't say that that's necessarily what it is.
Okay. And then with the protossis that's coming up, are you doing any outreach, any kind of programs on that? No, pretty much just?
Specifically.
Okay.
And that's the health department.
I understand.
You know, worked with on that of those cases.
But because you're so close.
I mean, we have vaccines sitting around and I, we have. We might speak to that.
Yeah, we're ready to, you know, account. We have vaccines on site. We have the ability to, you know, educate to on the spreading and all that, um, aspect, and then work along with the whole department, um, for the education for the school.
I have a question. Um, compared to your other sites, and I know this is, you know, it's only been open, you know, just, just, uh, not even a year yet. Um, but, uh, number of kids, number of treatments, how, how does it compare to some of the other sites?
So our Manistee school typically sees two hundred unduplicated as well. I think this is promising that we're, we are almost at two hundred and we haven't even been open a year. Um, I think it's going along swimmingly well. I would love to see more visits. I would love to see more families. It is, and and that's kind of what we're gonna talk about, the education piece or the getting the word out piece. Even like personally to my friends, it's like, yeah, it, don't go to urgent care. Come here. Just sign the consents and send your kiddo, right? Um, it, it's, it's really kind of foreign, right? And going back to how to advocate for your own healthcare, how to empower our students to go and explore it. Um, we talk a little bit, I think you'll talk about like lunch buddies. Again, in the West Middle School, just really trying to make those connections. Um, so I think, I think we have only up to go. Um, and I think we're doing well for, for the first year. We tend to see behavioral health always higher than medical, right? Medical, you're only going in if you need it. But we're about to hit flu season and, and you figure we started in late January of last year. So it'll be interesting to see what the numbers do this year.
Talk a little more about, cause I was wondering about the transportation of trying to get East and Central over. Is there any kind of beta or TCAPs?
Not really a TCAPs from the, as you know, I mean, we struggle with having enough drivers in that element. And I think beta is definitely, you know, a conversation. Um, I think you have to have a willingness, maybe of parents, to have the students on the. I think you have to have a willingness, maybe of parents to have the students on their own. You know, especially those younger, younger ages. But we'll continue to look at, you know, those elements and, you know, I am still not giving up on the thought of another one of these over at East Middle School at some point.
Well, we can talk about that.
Yeah, you know, I mean, some opportunities of grant funding come, I think, you know, but learn kind of what we're doing now with this and that element. But it's often such a struggle, you know, to get kids from one side of the town to the other and those elements. I mean, we, if it weren't really for the ISD that runs that transportation, you know, kind of program and helps us with funding and stuff for transportation for both of our high schools to go to Career Tech Center. You know, that would be a struggle, so.
We talked a little bit at East last year when I was at the lead there about no weekly shuttle. Trying to get together some ideas about the, the best, one of the best play things about the, the center is right. It just removes all barriers.
Right.
Which is nice, especially for the students at West Middle, where they just literally get a phone call, they sign out, they go over and they, and they get medical, all their medical needs met. So just yesterday I was in a parent meeting and referred them to this, cause that sliding financial scale, everybody's eligible. There is no issue. Do you have insurance? No, do you have Medicaid? I don't know. I can't get my kid there. So all those barriers are removed and the kid is in the building and literally walks there and gets the services they need. So we've been brainstorming, I've met with Heidi and Stacy a little bit about what it looks like at East and kind of, and the idea of, I think we, you went, moved forward with like the social work piece over at East this year.
Yeah, we talked about that.
So they do have that mental health component on top of what, what we offer at the school. But, you know, building onto that on the east side would be great. It is nice that some of our east side students right, right across division, you know, Bay Hill, a lot of those, the housing there is actually east side, so they do have the opportunity where they're pretty close. But we still have like, you know, Supply Road and all those that are.
Well, and I will say too, at Central, we tapped into it for the telehealth part, portion. Especially, that was super, super helpful. We actually had a few students who were in crisis and didn't speak English. And you guys were awesome. We got them hooked up with some mental health support that had the translation involved. And then it kind of then snowballed into some medical help that had the translation involved. So I think it is making our administrators and our families aware of that telehealth component. Cause that actually can be great and can diagnose and help support kids and families with a whole wide range. You're exactly right. Like you can actually do some basic diagnosis and, and support medically through that telehealth too, so.
Yeah, especially when they're sitting in your office looking right at you and you're like, let me ring and see if we can get the provider on a call. Which right now there's lots of spaces to get people in for the medical side. So that's great.
Can I come by for the meeting and get my COVID and flu vaccinations?
You can come to our clinic clinic, but not to the school clinic.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, tell me.
I missed my appointment at Meyer, so.
Didn't you, Dr. Van Wangeren, the, the school district that you worked at before also took care of teachers?
Yeah.
And we did not choose to do that with this one, not right now. How we would do it, if we did do it, it would be the post time or certain times that we would allow for teachers at the district to come through. And we did explore it a little bit. I know you, you know, it, there's a lot of benefits, especially during the school day. If a teacher's got like sore throat all of a sudden, they gotta go home or not go home or whatever. I think there's lots of benefits with it, but we want to try to figure out this first part.
Sure.
On-site strap test.
Um, go ahead. You want to talk about the marketing or do you wanna, you may move to the next one?
Well, no, just to kind of, to boost the awareness. Me personally, I started in this area in March. And so even seeing the awareness spread throughout the community and here's some examples, just so you have a little view. It's a really great snapshot of the providers, the services we do, very quick reference tool that we can provide anybody at any point in time. And then we've also done some different outreach throughout the summer. I might, we tagged with the, you know, the bus, the sunshine bus around. And that was great, getting our, getting our name out there and showing that connection that we're partnering versus, you know, two separate entities were actually, we represent one, you know? And so that was a great benefit. And then as well.
I want to add something. In that picture, you can see the school bus and then you'll see our medical mobile unit, which there is conversations that I'm trying to have with the state to say, why can't I put my medical provider that works at the, at the school-based health center on that medical unit and drive it over town? They are all about bricks and mortar. And so it, it's like, but school systems don't work off of bricks and mortar. And so that is a dialogue that's happening. It may take us a few years. I don't know if I'll ever get the need, but there's more than just this school-based health center that wants that, right? There's several of it, you know, there's, there's a lot of these in the state of Michigan. But that's how we would make that happen is put a provider on that. We also talked about that for the dental screenings, cause we have dental services. So I think there's nothing but opportunity. It's just you gotta work through some of the barriers that we have and that are set up in order to break them down to get further.
And so one thing that I had noticed too, we, we attended most of all the welcome back events. So you've probably seen some of us or all of us at these events, which was a great awareness to all the staff, the, I'm sorry, staff, parents, everybody. And it really was like an aha, they were connecting the things that they have been hearing about and now physically seeing it. And now we're, we're, we're trying to be as present out there as much, you know, to answer the, any questions and concerns. So we're always looking for ideas to come to us, to join events. Because both Hannah, the physician assistant, as well as Erica, the behavioral health, we're all trying to get that awareness out and bring, be more present to schools. So that is our goal. And it's been really, I mean, I have also seen the uptake just in the short time, you know, starting with the school. Soon as the first day of school, it was like, oh, we're here. And so our phones, you saw the uptake really quick. Sports physicals, you know, we were available for those that couldn't get in to their medical providers. Where we were able to handle the sports physicals and give it back to the medical provider, you know, have the access to the school. And so it's just a really good kind of win-win seeing it in progress. And I think our, our goal is to keep on going with this and ideas. And so we're always welcoming feedback and, you know, together as a team that can conquer all these barriers that we're trying to resolve for these students.
We do lunch buddies at West Middle School, which my, my, maybe you guys would appreciate this, I'm not sure. But the, the, my medical provider, she says, well, it's like being the new student every day. Going to that lunchroom and seeing all these middle school. So, you know, they're eventually, hopefully build some relationships there. Again, you're taking a bunch of health professionals into a school setting, so we're pretty vulnerable. And, but I, I think they're doing a great job in, in trying to navigate those waters. We also sit a lot at the West Middle School, all the conferences, all the like enrollment things we were at for all the schools. And many of the schools do it at the same time. I think there's a real opportunity with the Montessori School in trying to figure out how to get those kids tapped in and those families tapped into us a little bit more. I think that there, it would be nice from a security standpoint to remove some of the challenges at West Middle School for moving kids from the one building to the next. I, I haven't even presented this yet to anyone at TCAPs. So it's probably not appropriate, but it'd be cool to have a tunnel so that there was that security risk was, was removed. Cause that's the biggest deal is cause they gotta walk outside, right? And so now we're moving kids back and forth. And how do we remove that barrier so that more kids can be advocating for themselves? If they need to go talk to a therapist or they need that chill out room, or they just need a space to like, figure out what this thing is on their arm, right? So I, I think that empowerment and advocate for themselves is really key. And I think just partnering up with this back to school or your, your track event is a great opportunity for us to just give back, right? So trying to honor the teachers, honor to the staff that like, hey, we're here to actually be one of your resources and that you don't have to do it by yourselves. And if we got someone or some buddies, we'll, we'll be there. We did get an infrastructure award for the TCAP student health centers. We got all that money, which is awesome. We built the place and then we have one hundred and eighty to keep us moving, which pays for the staffing. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of extra, it's pretty clean. And, but we got some infrastructure money, so we are going to do some improvements. So what you'll see is that when you walk, I wish I had a photo of this. But when you walk up at the school-based health center, there's these steps. And this winter proved to be not great, lots of salt, lots of shoveling. So we're going to put an awning over it to the room. So just a little bit more protection of winter. We have, we're going to redo the doors and like the entrances, cause they're all the original ones that TCAPs had in hopes that maybe we can expand. Again, probably not appropriate for me to say it here, but that would be the hope, that we can like, if we got enough students of this district that want our services and the families are loving it, I would love to have that conversation. We're going to build out some windows. So we didn't originally put any windows in it because we didn't really have the money. But with the infrastructure money, we can put a kind of a nice window and it gets some fresh sunlight in there to help it out. And those are some of the main things I think that we're going to do for the infrastructure. And those are the four areas that we could use the funds for. So also I think, I think we have some security measures, although I will say that the, the, the team that did the blue light and all the things that y'all do that we had to learn was really easy to work with and really helpful. So thank you to the school district for all that support that we were given for our phone system and our security system and our shoveling system. So it's been, it's been a fun year. We figured out who to call, for sure. It's a couple of speed dial people. Again, this is to contact us if you have the slides and be able to catch us. So what's next? Okay, so now we're going to East Middle School. We already got the grant. We have one, we have a room off the library. And we'll have a behavioral health therapist also there five days a week, supporting the kids at East Middle School. Again, it's a Michigan Department of Health and Human Services grant that says specifically, go with East Middle School kids first. But we know Cherry Knoll is right there. We know that, that there's more opportunity and more access, we will provide it. We are still looking for a therapist. We're still have our job posting. So it's a matter of when we hire to put them in, because the room is pretty much all done. Yeah, we cleaned it up and thank you, Dan, for helping us initiate that this summer. And yeah, I think it's ready. Whenever we get a therapist, so. And it is year round. So it's not a school district type, it's not, it doesn't follow the school calendar. That's the uniqueness, is that neither one of these clinics run like a school calendar. They're year round. But I've been, I know that a lot of people take their PTO during the time that the school's out, because it's so quiet, especially between the holidays. So thank you. I, I, I wanted, I really do want to honor the TCAP staff for supporting this and making the first six, eight months wonderful. It's been fun and, and it's been really supportive. And so the team at TCAPs has been incredibly supportive to us and helped us navigate area that we weren't really overly familiar with. So thank you. Any questions?
I think I'm good.
Thank you so much. I would, I would like to just say for TCAPs to just keep trying to promote and communicate that, that we have this wonderful resource. You know, that, that are, all of our buildings, you know, be it our elementary buildings or, you know, secondary buildings that, that we keep pushing this resource in every way, cause it is such a great thing. And, and like you said, even going to that welcome, welcome back day at the track and having some staff say, oh my gosh, yeah. You know, it's, I think we need to do a better job of even pushing that communication, cause it is so good. And like you said, that sliding scale, no one's going to get turned away, which is, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Something to be said about that, so.
Absolutely. And, and those that qualify, we help them with that. So we help them with all their paperwork and figuring this out. I would be remiss if I didn't share who the first patient was of the clinic. He was a high schooler, a junior that had, well, I think a pink eye. It was my kid. I'm like, go try it out. And so we drove over there and anyways, it, it's just fun. It's fun to be able to like, have them figure out how to use healthcare and how to like check in, how to answer all the questions after, of course, I did all the heavy paperwork. So I, I wrote that down, so I'm like, oh, I'm missing that slide.
I've had kids there myself.
I love it, right? It's so easy.
Have you looked at some of the other schools in the area and made them aware?
Well, we can only serve TC, we can only serve TCAPs.
Only TCAPs.
Only TCAPs. Now, if you're a virtual kiddo through, I don't know how that goes, but I know that there are some kiddos, especially in our Manistee area, public school one, that are virtual, that were virtual in twenty twenty and we just kept on seeing them, so.
So if our kids are part of the Compass, you know, our Compass learning program. And but they may not be within the, you know, our necessarily, our borders, there's the eligibility.
Kids over Career Tech or?
No, only if they're, they have to be under our school codes.
Okay.
So but a virtual kid that's a part of our Compass Learning Center now would be eligible.
And there is a lot of need just in TCAPs alone. So we're just going to keep focusing there, keep on focusing with our middle schoolers. The other really cool thing that I always think about the middle school is that we're teaching them at sixth, seventh and eighth to go into high school. And like, now they've established how to do this. So we have that really prime time to work with them and teach them in the teen hours. There's no little kids, there's not little kids, there's no elementary school kids. It's all just teens that are there during that time, which also allows for teens to feel comfortable, like to go, that they're not going to be with, you know, a kindergartner that, that has something going on too, so.
Well, and on that note, with that Compass Learning Center, it might be a great opportunity for those kids, because they, the virtual kids probably are not aware of the service. So maybe to.
We'll get some pamphlets and stuff.
Push out some communication to them, you know, what a, what a great resource too. Yeah. And again, transportation might be an issue, but I know there are a lot of gas cards and bus cards that they give out. Yep. So that could be a great opportunity, so. Well, thank you so much for being here and such a great update. Sorry for the lack of introduction on my part. Throwing you right out there. But yeah, really, really appreciate you being here. And it's just great, almost a year later to kind of hear what's going on there, so.
Erica, can I say one other thing?
No.
Curriculum? If, if you have a health, like if you have a health need, I, I know both Erica and Hannah would be super interested in going into a classroom. So I have no idea how curriculum works, but, and I know it's about whatever that looks like. But I know they're always looking for opportunities, so.
Yeah, communicable disease, I would think, absolutely. Especially right now, cause you've got a, an interesting flair. This is unusual, this protossis, concerning.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we have it right now planned for, I believe, for maybe to come back for our board meeting, correct?
I have it on my calendar.
Yep, so is that, so it's in the committee, thinks would be good for the whole board? Or do you think at this point that we've had, what's your, your thoughts?
I mean, I think, gosh, I mean, I think, you know, a lot of our board members watch committee meetings. So I think, but I think even more so for our community. I think more of our community watches our regular board member meetings versus our committee meetings. And I think the information you've shared is, is great to push out to the community. I mean, as well as our board too, but yeah, I mean, I, if, if you guys are open to coming to the board meeting, I think it.
Sure. Can I adjust some of my slides?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It doesn't have to be same, same, right?
No.
Okay, same content.
Yeah.
Just a couple of slides on that.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, the message, you know, the community that's watching and listening, I think it's, it's good too, to kind of target that, that resource that we have. So, yeah, okay, great. All right, then we will move on to celebrations and successes.
Yeah, celebrations and successes. So we'll kick it off at some elementary schools. Here at Blair, a lot of, obviously every school has a system for their PBIS. And here at Blair, they do their Monday morning meeting with, with the entire, the entire group there for students. And it's ran by fifth graders, so you have that idea of students kind of empowering leadership. Cherry Knoll has their Deputy McKenzie from East Bay Township. I worked with her quite a bit when I was at East Middle School. She comes, looks like she's coming in on a monthly basis, just to talk to students about rights and responsibilities and how their interactions can impact them in and out of school. Cortade, we, we talked about Constitution Day. Specifically, here's a picture of them around their flagpole, their fifth graders led them in the national anthem on Constitution Day and the Pledge of Allegiance. Just reinforcing, reinforcing an idea of unity and patriotism. Long Lake, again, around that idea of PBIS, here's Kate Berwinkle participating in one of their circle times that they have to start off their classes. TCAPs Montessori rallying around their peace pole there for their International Day of Peace celebration. And here at Traverse Heights, a couple of celebrations here. And here at Traverse Heights, a couple of celebrations here. One, looking at their M-step that has come in, they've seen a almost 12% gain, and they're reading M-step over the past year or so. So that's something to definitely celebrate. And then also, they have their point system there with their houses, if you're familiar. So they kind of break it up like the Harry Potter way, and each house gets points for various, it's kind of their PBIS system for behavior.
Great Lakes way.
Great Lakes.
Ontario.
I was just gonna say, I know there's members here, so.
And we actually, there's an invite we just received for those that haven't been, have you been sorted?
I have not yet, because last year you came late to it, so I'll let Erica get on the board, then I'll get on the board.
No, no, I mean, have you been sorted at Traverse Heights?
I don't think I have.
Okay. That's what to, so when new kids come into Traverse Heights or the kindergartners, they get sorted. So the sorting ceremony, Brian K. just sent out an invitation to board members. Have you been sorted?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of. Okay. It's cool. It's really a cool thing, so.
You get a hat, I would imagine.
You, well, the, the more so the kids, the kids, the kids get, you know, but, you know, they make, it's fun, because the, we got sorted too, the adults, the new adults get sorted into a house, so.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So anyway, okay.
We may just be un-sortable.
I have not been sorted.
See that? There's another one.
I would go to Superior. Don't put me in Erie and Ontario, they barely count, they're so shallow, so.
That's right, it has to be Michigan.
I am Ontario. I am Ontario. I was sorted in Ontario.
They are shallow.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Sorry.
House Assembly, just as a highlight here, community is involved in that when they, when they have that assembly, so over 40 parents and caregivers were a part of that.
Yeah, and on to the secondaries. It's hard to believe we're in week six of the school year already. So last week, Central High School had their homecoming week, concluded with the game on Friday and their dance with over a thousand students on Saturday night in an outdoor tent. So try not to mitigate spreads of things, so that's nice. West is kicking off their homecoming week this week with their home game on Friday and their dance on Saturday. And sort of here on the eve of the fall PSAT is tomorrow for all of our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. And this PSAT is what qualifies our 11th grade students for the National Merit Scholarship. So you saw Central students who qualified, there, I think there were three. And then here are the West students, these are seniors who qualified as juniors through their PSAT. So that's tomorrow for both of our high schools there. And then it's always fun in the fall, we shook a lot of hands. I think Erica and I broke a record on that one. But at all four of our secondaries, we honor the academic achievements of the prior years, and each of them sort of doing a nice community unique twist on, on how they honor those and what those awards look like. Awards are consistent throughout four, all four of those secondaries. So we're able to attend those, and that's a great way just to celebrate all the academic achievement our, our kids are doing, so.
Good stuff. Good stuff, good stuff. Lots of good celebrations and, yeah, good, good, good report out on the celebrations, that's fun. Anything else anyone wants to add here today? No? Okay, well, thank you all for being here. Our next board curriculum committee meeting is October 29th at 8:30 here in this room, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting. So thanks, everybody. Yeah, thanks for being here, truly appreciate it, so.
Thank you, thank you.